All right, it's 5:00 PM and we are going to begin our Inclusive Education Update Work Sessions. I'm calling it to order. Dr. Watts, would you please introduce Ms. West to begin our presentation?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Daniels, members of the board, staff, and Ms. Hallie. It is my honor to introduce our Chief Learning Officer and our esteemed team from Inclusive Education to present today's work session, presentation, and all things inclusive education. Danell?
Danell, you're muted.
And we're waiting for it. Yes. There you are.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Benter, Dr. Watts, and Ms. Hallie. I am excited to introduce members of our Inclusive Education Leadership Team, who will be presenting an update on inclusive education this evening. So with us, we have Spencer Pan, who's our Executive Director. We have Beth Stoughton, who's our Coordinator, and John Robinson, who is our Assistant Director of Inclusive Ed.
Good evening, President Daniels, Vice President Benter, members of the board, Dr. Watts, and Ms. Hallie. We're excited to share this update with you tonight. As Chief West noted, I'll be joined this evening by Assistant Director John Robinson and Coordinator Beth Stoughton. So tonight, we're sharing three things. Can move to the next slide. First, we're reviewing key indicators and data that tell us where we're coming from. Second, we want to share with you work that we've been engaged in during our present context. And third, we want to connect that to the work that we have an eye on for forward planning. And then there'll be a time at the end for any questions at the conclusion of this presentation. So before we get into it, I want to talk about this through line. It's team functions. And you'll see here a graphic with a statement on the side. Often, you'll see statements like the one that's presented on the slide. It captures a function of our team. It shares that we're responsible for oversight, for reporting, for supporting, for influencing activities that improve learning outcomes for students. And I think a lot about the power of words. Words have power. Words have influence. Words can reference more than one thing. Even in that simple line of inclusive education, it refers both to our team, the inclusive education team in teaching and learning, but it also refers to services, inclusive education or special education services that we provide. Accordingly, we have to take the same care in looking at with how we use our words, with how we describe and understand our roles and our responsibilities so that we can be effective in our work. And so again, that through line tonight is this lens of team functions and responsibilities. The University of Washington-Boston developed this tool. It's called the Excel LSEA Responsibility Model, and it was designed to help new-to-profession special education administrators really outline where their influence targets were in supporting a district and in supporting schools, as well as their role within an inclusive education or special education team. And so when you start thinking about that model and that's that context, what is the role and responsibility of a core team at the district level? What is the responsibility of a district? And what is the responsibility at a school level? Our all-important facets, and our system needs to work in sync to be able to deliver the best outcomes to improve learning, especially for students with disabilities. So with that, I'm going to transition this next section to John Robinson.
Thank you, Spencer. And good evening, members of the board and Dr. Watts. Here we show the internal and external key indicators that guide our work. These indicators include to be fully staffed 100%, OSPI's external monitoring of our compliance reporting, graduation rates for students with disabilities, and post-school outcomes for students with disabilities. I'll review each of these in further detail. To begin, I'll provide with an example of how the LSEA model in our practices is related to the responsibilities of personnel supports. Excuse me. For personnel supports, the role of inclusive education is to provide a staffing structure for sufficient capacity to achieve school, i.e. team and district goals in compliance with regulations and labor agreements, as well as to support outstanding performance of all staff through clear expectations, regular feedback, induction, continued learning opportunities, and retention strategies. For the district, HR policies and practices facilitate the implementation of inclusive education staffing model. The district includes special education staff and appropriate general education professional development, leadership opportunities, and career pathways. And finally, for schools, they implement the staffing model and provide information to forecast staffing needs. Schools also use selection criteria to reflect current knowledge of effective practices in recruiting staff for inclusive education positions. To highlight the work we have done regarding staffing, in the fall of this school year, we had a total fill rate of 99.7%. 98% of those positions were filled with KSD hires. We had just .3 FTE unfilled. These positions included certificated teachers and ESAs. And ESAs include school psychologists, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. In addition to the effort we have made to ensure our positions are filled, we've also made a considerable investment in our overall staffing over the last five years. You can see here the total ESA staffing has increased 40.5% and teacher FTE has increased 14%. This increase in FTE is in response to contractual obligations and to ensure the implementation of every IEP across the district. Switching gears to our compliance indicator, OSPI uses annual determinations as a primary metric to verify technical special education compliance at the district level. District compliance monitoring ensures student special education evaluations drive student programming and student services at the building level. Kent School District is currently rated at a Level 2 on a four-point scale, with Level 1 being the highest designation. The one area that had a negative impact on our annual determination is post-school outcomes, and our gains in this area will be reviewed in the post-school outcome section. Here we see our four-year graduation rate for students with disabilities compared to their typically developing peers. While the Kent School District's four-year graduation rate tracks closely with what we see statewide, there is a notable increase in the graduation rate for students with disabilities over the four-year period from 2017 to 2020, as seen in blue. And when considering the four-year graduation rate for students with disabilities, it's important to note that some students may graduate at a later date is appropriate to the IEP, and some students receive services through their 21st birthday. In addition to the four-year graduation rate, we also track post-secondary engagement rates. The post-secondary engagement rate tracks students enrolled in higher education or some other post-secondary education or training program, competitively employed, or in some other employment or community engagement within one year of leaving high school. It provides a glimpse of how or whether our students are engaged in one year after they leave the district. This is also one criterion used for the annual determination from OSPI. 60% is a minimum threshold that flags this as an indicator in the state monitoring system. Kent School District's rate has increased to above 80% for the most recent year reported and is not yet reflective in our annual determination. In addition to the engagement rate, we also look at response rate to ensure we have a large enough sample to inform the engagement rate. Here we see our response rate from the most recent survey data from 2018-2019. These surveys are completed by former special education students relievers one year after exiting the district. Our 93.9% response rate had a positive impact on our engagement data, indicating that with a thorough survey and response rate of our leavers, we find that 84.6% of our students with disabilities are engaged in some form of post-secondary training, employment, or community involvement one year after leaving the district. So to summarize our progress on these key data and indicators, excuse me. We have made strides in hiring and retaining our staff. We are meeting state compliance requirements. And while we have seen a positive trend in our four-year graduation rate over the past several years, we do continue to see a gap. And finally, we have seen a significant increase in post-secondary outcomes in our most recent reporting interval. And with this, I'll transition over to Beth to review how we achieve our positive outcomes for students.
Good evening, members of the board and... In looking at this effect that we have up now, we'll focus on how we achieve our goals and what we do instructionally. We support and influence district-wide and school-level activities to improve learning. This includes related services such as OT, PT, and speech and language, academic and behavioral consultation, and professional development. Our department or team provides expert collaboration and assistance around instructional practices, learning, and behavioral supports. At the district level, there's an expectation of availability of tiered supports in schools. Our instructional model is inclusive of all students. There are clear expectations, structures, and resources to support school-level collaboration around student learning needs. At each individual school, we expect to see effective implementation of MTSS. There's close monitoring of instructional delivery to ensure program effectiveness. There is routine analysis of formative data at the school level to inform instructional adaptations, interventions, and curriculum modifications. One question that we had last year was if the time we spent in schools aligned with our mission and vision, as well as the needs of the schools. At the district level, inclusive education staff includes program specialists, board-certified behavior analysts, a social worker, and intervention team assistants who provide proactive as well as in-the-moment support to school teams. From January through March of 2020, we conducted a time study to inform our team of how we support the schools. The data you see here indicate that the majority of time spent in schools by Inclusive Ed staff was around coaching and consulting with building staff. 52% of that time, we spent 25% of our time in meetings and 14% of our time responding to crises in buildings. Only 9% of staff time was spent providing professional development, compliance activities, student observation. We can see that there's a large portion of time spent addressing crises from buildings in a reactive manner. And a further drill down of data provided by the Behavior Support Team indicate that much support is Tier 1 and Tier 2 level interventions. Moving forward, it will be critical if we're to become more proactive to shift our time spent in meetings and crisis response to be proactive time spent delivering professional development to support building the capacity of our teachers as learners. The pandemic and school facility closure provided the Behavior Support Team with some opportunities in our collaborative work. We shared updates on our caregiver consultations with the board previously and want to highlight this as a case study of how we can partner effectively in our area of expertise with building staff and families powerfully in support of our students. The Behavior Support Team identified that it needed to pivot how it provided services to school teams when the facilities closed. We were no longer able to be in schools and to provide supports and in-the-moment consultation and coaching. Families and teachers reported to Inclusive Education that it was difficult to keep students engaged and that they were seeing an increase in challenging behaviors, and students were missing out on the routines of school they had grown to depend on. These consultations provide a direct connection with families to model in-home supports and to demonstrate for teachers how to do so. The goals for caregiver consultations were simple and clear. First and foremost, to help families and staff to create organizational change by lowering the barriers to accessing the Behavior Support Team, incentivizing proactive responses from teachers, and building the toolkit of strategies for staff and families by sharing routine-based interventions. A caregiver consultation is a simple process that may be initiated by anyone who works with the student, including the family. The entire process occurs over several meetings, giving the caregiver time to practice new strategies. The first step is simply a meeting with one of our behavior analysts, the family and classroom teacher, to develop a very simple routine-based intervention which builds on already successful times of day or activities for a student. And this helps to create a family's toolbox of strategies to manage challenging behaviors or disengagement. The routines are developed in partnership with caregivers and based on their priorities. Coaching and feedback is provided to families as they implement the newly-developed routines, and they may be adjusted if they aren't working. It's all designed to help the family. When needed or requested, our social worker is invited to assist with getting basic needs met, such as how to access state funding for respite care, how to access some basic food needs, or clothing, or support groups, all which help to lower the stress on families, which then provide better outcomes for students. Since our team's made up of behavior analysts, we love data. So we have some simple data on the consultation that our team has provided so far this school year. We've worked with 76 families to date, and of those, 84% have been at the elementary school level. And when we look to see what services the students receive, 39% of these consultations have occurred with students who are in our integrated programs, while the balance, 61%, are from our more intensive programs, such as Adaptive Support Center, Support Center, Link, and School Adjustment. But by creating an opportunity with a low-risk entry point for accessing the services of the Behavior Support Team, we've been able to intervene early and often. And only nine of these cases have required more intensive intervention during remote learning. While we do anticipate that this may change as students return to in-person learning, we also believe that the early access to supports have proven effective to keep students from requiring more intensive interventions. This case study and other similar work are important for us to continue to engage in and showcase that we need to be very intentional, accountable, and clear in our responsibilities and plans, and strive forward with a proactive, results-oriented stance in our work to support our learners. And now I'm going to turn this back over to our Executive Director, Spencer Pan.
Thank you, Beth. So just what Beth was saying. These experiences, the experiences like the one that was just described, help us to highlight the importance of planning and how it impacts our ability and our effectiveness to execute the core work of our organization, which is really teaching and learning. So again, back to this through line of team function. I want to highlight that we can't do this work in isolation, and we can't do this without a plan. Our responsibilities in planning are to define priorities and actionable strategies that reflect a comprehensive review of the opportunities, the services, the resources, and progress. The district's goals in turn must include specific actions and goals for sustaining and improving special education services, our programming, and our outcomes. And at every individual school, we would expect to see plans that include goals and strategies that reflect a review of services and outcomes for students with disabilities. I saw this quote from President Biden from several years ago. It's adapted from a quote from James Frick, which says, "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." And so this is our budget. In five years, we significantly increased, as John noted earlier, our investment in staffing. Presently, staffing counts for 85% of our IE budget. Prospectively, over 90% when you start considering that the bulk of costs related to out-of-district placements is in staffing. And the other tab that you see that is in green, it says Contracts Other, includes agency staffing contracts. So you might wonder, why do we place such a premium and such a strategic importance on investing in our staffing? And the simple answer is because we know as an organization that our staff have the greatest single impact on student learning outcomes. Thomas Gilbert is a psychologist who pointed out that the value delivered by our performance is in the accomplishments that are produced, and that behavior needed to produce those results is expensive and inherently by itself has no value. So in short, attending a meeting, me attending a meeting, is inherently not very valuable, right? I could be very busy, but possibly not very effective. And I think as a society, we've become quite accustomed to trying to influence or organize activities that we engage in or exhibit, rather than really speaking in depth about the valuable products of our behavior. What are our accomplishments? So what I'm sharing here with you is an adaptation of what's called the performance chain. On our team, we've begun to discuss and frame our work in this simple three-part process. Performance is an action that produces a valuable product, which contributes to our measure, right? So using the example that Beth shared earlier, our Inclusive Education BCBA's collaborated with our elementary IE teachers. That collaboration is an action. We established effective caregiver consultation services. That's a product, a thing, to produce improved student outcomes as measured by progress on IEP goals. The focus here is not on the fact that we had a collaboration. The focus is on what we can measure and what we produce as an outcome of that. So knowing where we spend our time is knowing how to leverage our single greatest resource, our human capital, our staff. We need to allocate our resources effectively in service of our mission, which is preparing all students for their future. And the way we measure that, there are many, but most critically, we look at our student learning outcomes. As Chief West shared with you recently, our teams in teaching and learning, including Inclusive Education, are organizing our most important work under this umbrella of teaching and learning goals through action plans with clear deliverables and valuable outputs. This slide again outlines the work we've engaged in so far and our projected next steps. And while the timeline may adjust as we navigate shifting priorities for the current context of school reopening, it captures where we've been, where we are, and what we're moving towards. So in summary, I want to share with you this SWOT summary. It captures many of the themes that you heard tonight. And as with any system, we have strengths, we have weaknesses, we have opportunities, and we have threats that we face as a team and as an organization. We have accomplishments that our staff and our community can and should celebrate. Strong positional fill rates in inclusive education, CERT staff, the implementation of a staff practice guide, significant increases in our post-school outcomes. We also have obvious weaknesses that we know, preventing us from optimal performance. Opportunity gaps for students with IEPs, a lack of consistent integration of compliance practices and procedures district-wide. We have opportunities. We have favorable environmental factors that I think we can leverage. Opportunities to generate plans that focus on production of output, outcome measures, moving us away from a focus solely on the activities or the actions we engage in. We have opportunities to authentically and effectively engage our community in our staffing collaboration, similar to that micro example that Beth shared earlier. We have very real threats that we need to keep a continued eye on. Rising costs for our staffing investments and our reliance on outside providers for specific services and supports. So with that, I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to share a quick update around our work on behalf of our team and our amazing staff. We hope that we successfully provided you with a high-level overview and understanding of the work and the responsibilities of our team, what our data are telling us, a practical example of the work of our team, and where we are moving forward from here. And now I want to open this time up for any questions you might have from this update.
I have some clarifying questions, if I may.
Go ahead, absolutely.
Oh, awesome. First question, we talked about percentage of staff being unstaffed this year. I'm curious, if something goes unstaffed, what happens with the students who are supposed to get the services for that program? And are our services still met because of unstaffed positions?
So I can speak to this, and thank you for that question, Director Bento. I can speak to this, and then if it's not hitting the mark, let me know. Typically, we work closely with our human resources community for those unfilled vacancies. There's both substitute staff that we fill some of those positions with. And we also work, you'll see that component around agency staff. We do tap into agency contract providers that can fill those positions.
Awesome, thank you. Is there a program in the school district? I'm new, so I don't know, so I'm going to ask. That does like grow your own type of programs, like if people, if we're understaffed in the IE program where we can, staff who are interested can do some programming and get certified in special education in order to kind of fill those unfilled positions?
I'm not aware of any such program internally at this time.
Thank you. I really care a lot about special education. I just think of my family, I had a sister who had a learning disability and had an IEP. My little sister and I were both in SLP programs, and my brother was in a self-contained program and had a one-on-one parent educator working with him. So I really care a lot about this program. And so I have questions just because I want to make sure, like in my brain, that all those students are supported. So one of the things I saw was about post-school outcomes for students. I know that you have an adult transition program, but I'm curious about the gap in responses to one year after leaving programs. Can you explain or kind of verify why that might be, why students aren't being placed, and why they're not in the community?
So I think there's a lot, that's really why we engage in that post-school survey. It's to give us that information, because it is a phone call. It's a direct conversation and connection with that family or that student specifically. I think some of the information, as we looked at it, was just the lack of the engagement rate, right? You know, we reached out to these families, but what are the avenues? What are the avenues and ways we go about making sure we connect and get that information? And so I think that's one of the factors we saw in the uptick. The state average for that response rate is around 77%, and we were able to, in this last cycle, move our KSD response rate up to like 93%. So one factor of that is just making sure that we successfully connect with families.
Awesome, thank you. I have one more question. Thank you for indulging me. I noticed that in the presentation, it said that in your program, you have one social worker, which was really surprising to me that you had one. I'm wondering about what the ratio of the workload is, and if you know that if any of the SFR funds that are coming can help with social work and other mental health services for our students in IE that are in need?
Go ahead, Beth.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to share. I'll answer to the best of my ability, and then Spencer, please share. Are social workers a new addition this year, specifically to our Behavior Support Team? Typically, counseling and those mental health services are more of a general education support that would come from student and family services and not inclusive education. But we, as we developed the Behavior Support Team over this past couple of years, wanted to add that piece in. Spencer, anything else to add on that?
Absolutely. Just, it's a supplement, right? And so for us, it's really looking at what is the best use of that resource and responsibility set for that individual at a district level? If we have sustained mental health needs at a building-based level... If we have sustained mental health needs at a building-based level, a lot of a lot of our discussions are around how to allocate those resources effectively at a building-based level, right? It's a lot more effective to operate that in the context of a team, you know, either counselor or a social worker embedded in the school team rather than a deployment that's centrally delivered, if you will. So the role that we have from a central office deployed social worker is a bit different in context than it typically would be at the building-based level.
So I am curious about the, thank you to Director Bento for bringing up the social workers. I had similar question. And one of the things that, when, as you were talking about the caregiver consultations, was I was thinking about what happens with division of children and families. And they used to have a program called Family to Family funded by any KC foundation and very similar concept in bringing together stakeholders invested in the child. And I was thinking about the difficulties that we faced in that process in not having the relevancy, cultural relevancy that is needed for that child. And so I was wondering, one, are we working with our Division of Children and Family Practices? And then two, what is, what are we doing about that cultural relevancy component?
Right, so the caregiver consultations are usually coming from our classroom teachers and where it's appropriate and when we know that a family is using outside resources. So we have a family that we've worked with that is linked up with some great community resources through like the Iraqi Community Center, for example. We've pulled them in as part of our work with that specific family. And that's where we've also pulled in our social worker as well to try to help access some of those pieces. I don't know about, just by lack of understanding around some of that information and what exists is something I would love to learn more about, though.
Yeah, no DSHS does.
Oh, DSHS, okay, I understand.
Yeah, Division of Children and Family Services. They used to be very actively involved with our counselors at the Kent School District and I don't know what the connections have been of late. But it seems like if we're looking for more social workers and a good partnership there would be worth considering. And then also regarding cultural relevancy, you know, we have like open doors for multicultural families and there are different sources, of course Coalition for Refugees from Burma. You know, because when we pull in people who we think are helpful, you find out from the children that they're not really very helpful to them. So I'm just hoping that we're doing that kind of feedback and conversation with the student.
Yes, we are working with open doors when we know that the family is involved with them already. But I appreciate the suggestion of perhaps reaching out to them otherwise, even if they're not already involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a general question about, because this is kind of a newer area to me. How does, how do children or students become involved in, you know, how do you determine IEPs? How do you determine, do parents bring it up? Do teachers bring it up? How does one, how does a child or student get involved with providing these services? Is it made known to people or if they need these? I'd kind of like to be walked through that, if you could help me to understand that, please.
John, if you could.
Yeah, thank you, Director Hamada. There's a, each building has a referral process. So if there's a concern from a parent or a teacher or somebody who knows the student within the school community can refer the student and the, there's a team goes through a process looking at eligibility criteria to determine whether that student's eligible and needs special education services.
I mean, are all our families and all our different speaking, all our families that come from different backgrounds or languages, are they aware of these services that are available? I mean, I'm just curious about that.
We do a lot of work on outreach. We have what's called child find obligations. Students in the community, even if they're not school age yet, to provide access to the referral or the evaluation process. And that is provided, that information is provided in multi-language languages.
Thank you.
And I'll just add to that one portion. To be able to effectively disseminate that information, we do partner with different organizations and, you know, childcare settings to make sure that that information gets disseminated there.
So we have an ECAP program in Kent as well, yes? Okay, and so do students also come to us from the ECAP program? Like that's one way that they are identified as potentially needing services?
We do receive referrals from ECAP.
Okay. And then I, so when you talked about seventy-six families to date had participated in these caregiver consultations, how many families do we have total in the district that have students that have IEPs?
Oh goodness, Spencer, do you know the exact number?
I don't know the exact number by families, so.
Right, or the exact number of students on IEPs? I, is just under three thousand, I believe?
It fluctuates month to month, but that's about the right number, I can grab that.
And we've worked to share this information and to disseminate the information about the caregiver consultations out through our IE bulletin that goes out through our principal communicator. It's been shared at meetings that we hold with buildings. And so teachers and building administrators have been made aware of this and shared with families at IEP meetings. We really want to do this for as many families as we possibly can.
And how has this pandemic impacted just updating IEPs for all our students?
Director Bedinger, if you could clarify that.
So, you know, as I understand it, there are regular requirements to update IEPs. So how has that been impacted by the pandemic? Has, have we been able to fulfill and update all the IEPs for every student? Or have, has there been, have there been delays?
I think it's always a combination, right? And what I mean by this is one of the indicators that's tracked is around timeliness of IEPs and evaluations. And we could definitely produce that data that's reported to the state. It's probably less so around the impact, the pandemic's probably impacted less around the procedural requirement of completing that more than it has impacted how we collect relevant information to be able to meaningfully update documents, evaluations, or IEPs, right? We can complete the procedural requirement, hold the meetings, do those things. We have to think a little bit differently in terms of how we work with families, access families and students to hold those meetings. But that, I wouldn't say that's been a considerable roadblock. Our staff have worked diligently to problem solve kind of those accessibility issues around that and also how we evaluate. What's probably the greater challenge is getting sufficient information that can be actionable, meaningful to make those documents a really useful document.
Spencer, would it be helpful to share a little information about how we continued with the evaluation process during the pandemic? And also the OT, PT supports that have been, how we've navigated that?
Sure, I'll give a brief overview. So, you know, early on, one of the items we shared in the prior board update was in the beginning of the year, there was definitely a leg, right? When OSPI shifted from the, shifted to full implementation of IEPs expected at the start of the school year. We had a number of evaluations either through a child find process in the spring of last year or through the course of the summer, where when we looked at that, we needed to catch up and doing some of that work. So our school psychologists and our labor partners and school psychologists worked out plans to conduct any necessary evaluative work that required in-person evaluation support out of the central office. And we developed a procedure and protocol for completing those. We caught up with that work in October. And so from that point forward, that's not been a roadblock, if you will, in that process. We continue to conduct those necessary in-person evaluations at the district office. The, for physical therapy, Mr. Robinson can provide a quick update around that, but it's a similar partnership with our service providers.
And we are providing in-person physical therapy at the district office for those students who require it, who can't access it remotely. I would also note that for the IEP process, they are updated annually. They are also updated as student need presents itself. And teams have been able to successfully amend those IEPs, update those IEPs as this pandemic has gone on and student needs have changed over time.
So how are we measuring during this pandemic that all our students with IEPs are getting all the services they need?
IEPs are implemented remotely. There's a percentage of students who've been identified as requiring in-person services. For those students who are able to access remotely, whether it's, you know, specially designed instruction in academics such as math or reading or writing or speech therapy, that's provided as it would be otherwise within their schedule through the remote environment.
So I'll add to that a little bit, that might help. What Director Bedinger, Vice President Bedinger, you're asking. You know, the requirements haven't changed, right? The IEP itself guides our requirements in terms of reporting and accountability around that. So we have progress reporting requirements that demonstrate whether or not students are making progress towards those IEP goals. And we expect that services on those IEPs are being executed and provided. And so that process and what we shared earlier, there was a triangle that shared the consistency index from the state. That's the same process that still exists. Evaluations identify the needs of the student, the IEP, that program plan is the capture of how we're going to, how are we going to provide the specially designed instruction that's articulated? And then the last component is a student's schedule, right? Student schedules and services are the evidence that that plan is being implemented. And so that's, that triangle is really those three steps. Evaluation identification, development of the plan, and the verification that those services are, the evidence is provided that those services are being rendered and that evidence is inherent in school staff and student schedules.
Okay, so all students that need in-person learning have been getting it in, with, have IEPs? That they can only get those services in person?
No, and so I'll, like, in terms of that question, we are working at an individual level with families and IEP teams around how to implement those services. We have a protocol and process during the one-hundred percent remote instruction. There's a few different ways we provide those services. If they need services that we can render at the district office, for example, physical therapy, those are things that we prioritize and can provide. If they need other services, then we work on kind of problem-solving, different individualized solutions. And these can vary anywhere from what we've done throughout this year, providing in-home supports to allow students to be able to access the instruction that is being provided remotely. In some cases, that's not practical or feasible as well. And so there are limitations to what we're able to do in terms of the execution of that programming. And that really lends itself then to conversations around what we can do to support and mitigate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much, all of you, for that presentation. It was really good information and very thorough, so we appreciate it very much. You, well, so we have a work session, so it's like a minute thirty seconds away. So at this point, I will go ahead and adjourn the work session. And this work session is adjourned for an exempt session. And this work session is adjourned for an exempt session.
Sorry, I was muted. Okay, so we have adjourned the exempt session and now we will go into executive session to discuss with legal counsel representing the district litigation or potential litigation to which the district is likely to become party.
You need to exit the meeting so I can let you back in.
How do I exit the meeting? Just leave the meeting?
Yeah, leave the meeting.
And then jump into the exec session or just back into the regular?
Back into the light. Just back in and I'll move you in.
Okay, thank you.
Did I leave too soon?
Thank you.
Good evening. It's 7:00 PM and I would like to call our regular meeting to order. I want to acknowledge that Director Benno will be absent for a part of this regular board meeting and he will join in process. Director Hamada, would you please say the Pledge of Allegiance for us this evening?
Sorry about that. We might have to bear with Sarah barking here. I'm trying to silence her. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our audience to the meeting. Vice President Bettinger, would you please read the land acknowledgement for us this evening?
Certainly. We acknowledge we are gathered upon the ancestral lands of the Muckleshoot Indian tribe who historically lived throughout the area between the Cascade Mountains and Puget Sound.
Thank you. At this time, I'll explain the process for audience participation. Welcome. This is a meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. Process for audience participation is as follows. The purpose of board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from the audience. Those wishing to comment must complete the online form as indicated on the district website and in board docs. Tonight, there will be two periods where public comment will be heard, at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. Questions raised or submitted public comment addressing an issue may require further investigation and staff will contact you to follow up. If you indicated a desire to speak to an agenda item, your comment will be read at that portion of the agenda. General comments tonight will be read during the Audience Communications sections of the agenda. Dr. Watts, are there any changes to the agenda?
President Daniels, there are no changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. We are on to Agenda Item 2.0, Preliminary Communication from the Audience. Ms. Howley, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. President Daniels, we have 22 comments. And I will start 30 minutes of comments right now.
Thank you.
The first comment is from Tajon Bennett. He says, "Hello, me and a lot of my friends really want to play basketball this year and was wondering if you guys can open basketball tryouts. I feel like it would be good for you guys to do that because a lot of other kids might want basketball tryouts too. And I feel like a lot of kids might not be athletic, but if this opens up, people like that can probably be more athletic. I also feel like this can get people to work harder more because if they have something to do that will make them more competitive in basketball. Also, this can bring people together just because of the sport. And I know what we can do. You guys can do temperature checks before every game. And when we are on the sideline not playing, you have to wear a mask. Then when you're in the game, you still wear your mask or take them off while you're in the game. And you can bring only one friend and three other family members. I feel like that is a safe way to play basketball during COVID. Please take me up on my offer. A lot of kids really want to play basketball this year." The next comment is from Stacy Miller. She says, "Thank you in advance for listening with an open mind and hearing concerns coming from your community. Over the last four days, several efforts were made to contact district administrators to clarify and/or correct information being disseminated to families. Once the survey was released, many families were being notified by staff and teachers that if they choose a hybrid model, they may have a substitute teacher or maybe transfer to another school to accommodate their request. Because the survey had been sent, I made urgent requests to update families on the validity of this information so that they could make a fully informed choice. Nobody that could address this at a district level responded. As of Monday evening at 10:35 PM, nothing has been sent to clarify and/or correct this information to families. My school principal did reach out to her leadership and they had not heard of this and did not believe it to be true. But somehow, many teachers and at least one board member believe it to be true. So which is accurate? Can you see how this conflict in information may cause doubt in KSD's plan? How can families make an informed choice if this information isn't included in the survey? And if it is not true, why isn't the district immediately addressing this miscommunication to ease angst and provide reassurance? If KSD is going to bind families to their survey choice, KSD needs to be more transparent and disclose how their decisions may impact students. Volunteering my time on the task force over the last several months was a way to offer a parent voice in planning. I felt as a nurse working with COVID patients, I could be impactful and provide valuable help in a safe return to school. I wanted to be an ally and to be a part of the solution. I took this role seriously, researching safe practices and successful return plans used by schools across the country. The operations work group recommended an A/B schedule with the knowledge that it would increase access to hundreds of children. I was so disappointed to see that the in-person learning schedule KSD adopted was not the one recommended by the task force, therefore decreasing access to hundreds of students. Kent School District promotes social platforms such as equity and inclusion, yet made a decision that significantly and negatively impacts our most vulnerable students. With this plan, if enough teachers return, a fraction of children per grade level will be allowed access to in-person learning. At my school, that number is cut significantly since entire grade levels of teachers are opting to stay home. KSD isn't promoting equity when in-person learning is offered to a fraction of its students. KSD isn't promoting equity within its own district boundaries when one school has a majority of its teachers returning and another almost none. KSD isn't promoting equity in education when neighboring districts have been back at school and our kids remain at home. It is hard to come to a place of understanding after 11 months of remote learning." Excuse me. It's hard to be patient and give grace when we see other districts figuring it out. Many industries laid the groundwork for safe practices. Schools across this country have given other schools a blueprint of what is... Sorry, I lost my place again. Schools across the country have given other schools a blueprint of what safe and successful in-person learning plans look like. What is the barrier for KSD? I know of six people moving out of the district before September solely because of the district. That's just one person who... That's just one person who knows six people. What if we all knew six people moving out? I wonder how that makes you feel. What are you going to do to restore the trust with your community? You have to do better. You need to do better. You have had months and months to plan for a return. You have had all of the research evidence, science, and resources at your disposal. Please, I implore you, build trust with your staff and teachers. Rebuild trust with your community and get us back into school. If not now, it has to be in September. The next comment is from Lois Keller. She says, per the governor's orders, I thought kids had to have the option to go back to school. My child wants to return in person. If the school she is in doesn't have the capacity, will we be allowed to transfer to another school in the district? Out of district? Steve Sorrow writes, the members of this board and Dr. Watts have completely failed in their duties. They've had no plan on reopening despite several districts around the state having shown how it's done. I have emailed the board and only received canned BS responses. I will be contacting OSPI as well as Governor Jay Inslee specifically about Kent School District. Stop playing games with our kids. I'll also be starting recall efforts for every single board member. The next speaker is Emma Doggett. She says, what will the hybrid learning look like? What will graduation look like for seniors after the hybrid learning has been announced? Will there be buses for students that need transportation to and from school during hybrid learning? And what will that look like? What will lunches look like during hybrid learning? Jennifer Patterson. Jennifer says, I find it absolutely awful that there is no logistics put in place with the KSD School District Board. We had many parents quit their jobs to accommodate remote learning. And now with a five-day, half-day schedule, you are asking the remainder of the parents who still have a job to sacrifice even more. You have no consensus of your district. We are already one of the most economically diverse districts and you are enabling the gap to get larger with your lack of planning. Your leadership and communications have been awful at best as well. Having 12 months to plan and coming down with what is likely the worst schedules for these kids and parents is just mind-boggling. I hope that you are getting many more emails like this to change your ways and your leadership. Rebecca Riley. My name is Rebecca Riley and I am a parent to a student at Covington Elementary School. I have already taken my concerns to Sarita Williams, Dr. Avery, and Mr. Vella at the district, Superintendent Reichdahl and Governor Inslee, and our local media outlets. I did receive responses from two people, though little was reassuring. My concerns and comments. One, there is a massive breakdown of communication regarding school opening backup. When too many rumors circulate, there is obviously inconsistent or no communication. This is a huge detriment to families who look to the district for guidance. We do not know what or whom to believe. Number two. I have received conflicting information from the district and school regarding the return to in-school learning. Some info was that only 30% of the student body would be allowed back to school. However, Governor Inslee's proclamation states that schools will be expected to provide an in-person learning option that equates to at least 30% of instructional time by key deadlines. A, April 5th, all students K through 6 must be offered a hybrid option. B, in addition, schools must offer students at least two days per week of on-campus instruction. Three, I was also told that a 30% priority goes to students with an IEP and SPED. Somewhat understandable, but all students need to be given access to in-person learning if they choose, as so states the proclamation. Number four, on that same note, I understand that many teachers have chosen to remain remote. One awful rumor is that they have no trust or faith in their school administration to do what it takes to keep the school safe. That is alarming, to say the least. This needs to be addressed and rectified at once. And who is hurt most by these adult issues? The students. Number five, we have what we've been waiting for, a vaccine. All teachers and school staff can get them. What more could we hope for in a safe return to school and our lives? Number six. Families have been tasked with deciding if their child stays remote or returns to school without all of the information. This is unfair and a huge disservice to those you serve, the students and their families. If these issues come up after the fact and families are stuck with a decision when they didn't know the whole story, this situation will grow worse. Number seven. It seems like KSD is in a beneficial position with being one of the last districts to open. You have access to a plethora of data, knowledge, and protocols that schools have been putting in place since fall 2020. Why is this so difficult for us? Thank you. Sean and Stephanie Brown. They write, the presented hybrid plan does not appear to accommodate all children that want in-person learning. Jacqueline Chung. Jacqueline says, I'm wondering if KSD will consider distributing information reminders in multi-language especially when it is important information like the elementary family commitment survey. I have encountered families who do not know about the survey because English is not their first language. After knowing about the survey, they also have a difficult time completing it because they need to access to Skyward as most of them are not tech savvy and with a language barrier. Would KSD considering ways to help support these families? Thank you. Bethany Everly. I am so disappointed in the school district for their inability to come to agreements with labor partners over the last few months. So many other school districts in the state and country have figured out how to safely reopen and start healing the damage done to our children during this terrible pandemic. I feel like the children are not the focus in our district or we would be back in the classroom. When Inslee ordered schools to offer all students a seat in the classroom for at least 30% of the usual instruction hours, parents were thrilled and our children started to rekindle the lights in their eyes. But now upon further investigation, it really doesn't sound like our district is following the mandate. We are being told the teachers are choosing not to go back and that there will be limited space and the school will have to prioritize the availability. Absolutely not acceptable. Schools are keeping parents' work schedules in limbo right now, jeopardizing our careers as you hold us hostage to stay home with our children or pay for childcare when they should be in publicly funded school. My child has come to a whore school and turned into a basket case at home at the mere mention of school. For an academically minded family, this is utterly heartbreaking. We are working on therapy options to help curb the damage done and I know that it will now take much more than just getting back to the classroom to get back to normal. The evidence shows we are not alone in this. So many families are struggling with mental and behavioral health issues over the prolonged school closures. I am really glad that we were able to stay home and stay safe, but now is the time to start following the science and it starts with getting our kids back into the classroom. In my humble opinion, this should have been the biggest priority the whole year over restaurants, sports, entertainment, retail, everything. Our children are our future and we need to support them. My biggest concern is that you are not offering the same opportunity to all children. The order is clear and simple. Offer all students a seat in the classroom for at least 30% of instructional hours. Make it happen or you will start seeing enrollment rates decline. Furthermore, Kent's schedule is terrible. If we had an A/B schedule, we could commit to going back to work those days they are in the classroom. Whereas with only three and a half hours instruction, we are still stuck catering to the school's hours. Not to mention, you would double the seats available in the classroom each week. Katie West. Hi, I'd like to share my thoughts about returning to in-person learning. My son is a fifth grader in the Kent School District and has been doing remote learning now for over a year. It has been awful for him mentally, emotionally, socially, and physically this past year. As parents, we strongly believe he will benefit most from being back in the classroom as soon as possible and as much as possible. We also respect that other families may not feel the same way and might prefer their kids stay home at this time. I appreciate that families are being given a choice. However, it seems the choice to return to in-person learning is not really being encouraged. My concerns are based around ensuring my son and his peers have the best opportunity for success in their return to school. They have already been through so much upheaval and stress this past year. It is hard for me to imagine disrupting his current learning routine only to send him back after a full year of being out into a new unknown scenario with possibly different classmates and a different teacher this late in the school year. It hardly feels like a great choice for his overall well-being. And yet I know remote learning has not been good for his health either. At the end of the day, I just want him to have the best possible chance for emotional, social, physical, and academic health in the midst of this traumatic time. My request is this. Can we please consider the option of keeping all kids with the teachers and classmates they've had all year? This could truly help students adapt and transition back in the most comfortable and safe way. We know younger kids have a greater need developmentally and especially during times of crisis for stability, predictability, and consistency. I'm asking that you please consider having teachers stay with all of their kids by teaching in-person and remote simultaneously. I know other schools across the country have successfully transitioned back to in-person in this way. That way, the kids at home and the kids at school would all receive the same education from the same teacher and there might be more of a sense of normalcy and consistency for all. If this was the choice presented, I know we would feel the return to in-person learning was a viable option and a great choice for our son. Next public comment is from Nancy Tom. I am very concerned about the K6 option that families are being asked to complete. There is no information being provided, so we aren't able to make an informed decision. I'm required to pick an option of hybrid or online by tomorrow and we still have not had any answers to our questions about how the dual-language classes will operate. I have a fifth grader in the dual-language program. He has two teachers. What happens if we choose hybrid and one or neither of the teachers return to school? Will he go to another DL school? Will he go into an English-only class or is his only option to stay online? Families need to know so we can make an appropriate choice. It has been mentioned that kids will be assigned to different schools. I want my son to stay at his current school in the dual-language program, so the other options are not something I'm willing to do. Why weren't families given an option to follow what their teacher does? Is it because if everyone goes back in person, the plan cannot serve them all? Why didn't KSD come up with a plan that has the potential to serve all KSD kids? Why put forth a plan that serves so few students? This is not preparing all our kids for the future. KSD has wasted the past year, has no plan, and then the governor mandates schools to return in person. Why don't we have a plan? Why was nothing planned in the past year? What has the leadership in our district been doing? This is unacceptable. KSD leadership is once again failing our kids. Look at all the districts around us who have figured out how to do this in less time. They are already providing in-person schooling. So what is the plan, KSD? Families, teachers, principals, and other KSD staff deserve to know how it's going to work. Putting forth a plan without any answers is ridiculous. KSD leadership is paid to do a better job than this. Not to mention all the extra COVID funds the Kent School District is receiving. $100 million. What is the plan for all this extra funding? Why can't KSD look at local districts who are already back in person, making it work successfully? Why do you always think we have to reinvent the wheel? Look at other programs, see what works and what doesn't, and then do it. Thank you for your time and commitment to our community. Please force the KSD leadership to provide answers. Please hold your employee responsible for the failures of the past year. This is unacceptable. The next comment is from Megan Smith. I am an emergency room RN who has shown up to work every single day of this pandemic without question, without a vaccine for 10 months of it and when PPE was scarce. So I may have a much different perspective than others. Though I would imagine that many other parents within KSD fall in the realm of having shown up to work tirelessly day in and day out of this pandemic, whether it be medical staff, gas station attendants, grocery store workers, childcare providers within the KSD buildings nonetheless, police, fire, EMS, etc., all doing our jobs for the betterment of the community. I am not asking teachers to do something I and hundreds of other parents haven't already done. There is a reason taxpayer dollars go to the public education system because it is vital to the long-term health of our community and country as a whole. Public schools are as important as the public hospital. Teachers are civil servants like many other professions, ensuring the children of our community lead healthy lives long after they have left formal education. It's time for teachers to be the heroes and save the children of our community who desperately need their love and guidance. Science has proven in-person return to school is safe. Teachers are well-educated professionals and have the ability to discern and evaluate the scientific data. There is no doubt in my mind that teachers experience the same calling to their profession that nurses do, a dedication to their students. The Department of Education ensures it will promote student achievement and preparation for global competitiveness by fostering educational excellence. and preparation for global competitiveness by fostering educational excellence and ensuring equal access for their website. For those that remote learning is working well and they choose to remain in that platform, great. But for many, including my first and fourth grader, remote learning is a failure. The current K S D in-person schedule will significantly limit the number of students that are allowed to return in person. As far as I am concerned, any child who chooses the hybrid in-person option provided by K S D is saying remote learning is not working for them. And in order to thrive educationally, they need to be allowed to return. Our children have the constitutional right to equal access. This means that elementary schools need to hold class in the gym for sixth graders and in the multipurpose room for the fifth graders to allow classroom space for younger students, so be it. It is time to think outside the box and ensure every child in the district has equitable access to high-quality academic, which is guaranteed by K S D's own mission statement. Please do not deny any child that wants to return in person. The next comment is from Carrie Elsop. The current proposed hybrid option is not in the best interest of students. I truly believe it does not follow the governor's mandate as well. With the current agreement, entire schools may not be able to offer any hybrid if all teachers choose to stay remote. There are not enough substitutes to adequately fill the need for hybrid learning. Also, by prioritizing hybrid seats for kids with learning disabilities, you are putting our most vulnerable students with potential substitute teachers who do not have adequate training in how to best teach them. You are removing positive peer models, which is in a critical part of education and learning. With the Kent School District's announcement that they will not be implementing the new C D C guidelines of spacing students three feet apart, it is absolutely essential that a second cohort is offered to ensure that all students have the opportunity to a hybrid learning option. The next comment is from Whitney Rose. Please explain how K S D will be providing in-person instruction to my child per our choice is mandated by the governor when the three teachers in their grade level have chosen a remote option and there are not enough substitutes to fill the demand of in-person teaching. All teachers are eligible to receive vaccines. C D C's social distancing, distancing requirements are three feet. Excuse me, and COVID cases continue to decrease daily. So please address why either one, more desks aren't being put in classes to allow all children to return if they choose in-person in the A schedule model, or two, why an A B schedule with two cohorts wasn't chosen to allow all students to return if they choose in-person? Please define how you will be adjusting the current plan ASAP to address these issues and better align with the governor's mandate.
President Daniels, that was thirty minutes, and we have a couple left for later on in the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hallie. At this time, we're on to our superintendent report, Agenda Item three point zero. Dr. Watts, will you please give us your report?
Yes, thank you, President Daniels, members of the board staff. This evening, I do want to share with you that equity in education certainly requires that we acknowledge our students come to us from various backgrounds with different strengths and, as we know, varying degrees of readiness. But over this past year, we've all navigated the pandemic. We've navigated the challenges that COVID nineteen has brought upon our students, our families and our staff, have neither been equal nor equitable in many cases. Now, in, in also, in many ways, the pandemic has shone a bright light on those inequities within public education as a whole. We know there are three core values: equity, excellence, and community in Kent School District. First among equals is equity. We describe equity in this way, that we address, to the extent that we can, the needs of our students, staff, and families when they need it. And that's why equity is so challenging, not impossible, however. Our building level and central administrator leaders have been and continue to be committed to addressing educational equity within our district. However, given the complex change management that exists as a result of the pandemic, this work does take more time than in normal circumstances. Now, as I shared in the past, the pandemic has not accelerated our work. It has really highlighted those areas where we, we need to work differently to address individual and organizational needs. And because of these complexities, we are not able to move as quickly as we would like toward our goals of returning to in-person learning. However, we are making perfect progress. Now, that's not confused with being perfect. We are making perfect progress towards our goal, toward and ultimately through our equity finish line. Now, as a system, we believe when school-based conditions of learning are aligned with the values of equity and excellence, the potential for accelerating student learning can be improved. So when we prepare to implement a new learning model in Kent School District, like the hybrid model that will begin in just a couple of weeks, we use our equity lens to determine which members may be disproportionately advantaged or disadvantaged based on any decision we make. And I continue to remind myself, our staff, and our families that implementation is rarely successful unless learning and equity conditions are established first. And this is one of the reasons why our work has been intentional toward our reopening plans. And we must ensure also that we are allocating our resources, time, human resources, financial resources. And in this case, the resource is limited in-person instructional time in the form of a hybrid model. This also means that we are considering race and ethnicity and other essential learning aspects of our students as we make this shift into hybrid model for these last few weeks of the school year. Now, we will move to a hybrid learning model throughout our schools. As we plan, this will start on April twelfth for our students in kindergarten through sixth grade and April nineteenth for our pre-K and seventh through twelfth grade students. The option to learn in person is being offered to all students pre-K through twelve. Now, still, space in our building is limited based on the negotiated schedule as well as the physical distancing requirements from the Washington State Department of Health. But when students return to in-person learning within our buildings, our staff will work to ensure students are physically distanced throughout the school day. We will also require all students and staff to wear masks or face coverings unless they have a medical exclusion. Now, everyone will be encouraged, as always, the mitigating strategies, to wash their hands frequently. And we've also worked to improve air ventilation and air quality in our buildings. We've provided details about what this means in several ways, and, and still, we can do more. Many of the COVID nineteen-related shifts that we have made in our approach to teaching and learning, like our hybrid schedules, they are temporary. And while vaccines are more widely accessible and as continued mitigation practices are implemented in our community, the time when all students can return to our buildings to learn, to achieve, has become more of a reality now than it has been over this past year. However, we must also remember that we are still living within a pandemic. And COVID nineteen is still an active threat in our community. With that in mind, we must also be prepared to transition back to a remote learning model for a classroom or an entire building, as the case may be, if we have a confirmed outbreak or an increase in cases in our area. That said, if classroom and school closure decisions, decisions need to be made, they will be done in partnership with information and science based on Seattle-King County Public Health. We are also offering a remote learning option for students with health concerns or families who do not yet feel comfortable having their students return to school buildings for learning in person. And whether you choose in-person learning or remote learning, all families and staff will be impacted by this shift to a new model after spring break. And we are working with our labor partners to minimize the impact on our students and to focus on teaching and learning with an emphasis on learning. However, we do know that this will be an adjustment for everyone. And we thank you in advance for being kind and respectful and patient with each other as we continue to navigate the changes together. I recognize, as a parent, as our superintendent, this change will not be easy. And yet it is our opportunity. So finally, please keep in mind that the primary symptoms of COVID nineteen are shortness of breath or difficulty breathing, coughing, and fever or chills. Other symptoms include fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, the new loss of taste or smell, sore throat, congestion, or runny nose, also nausea or vomiting and diarrhea. If your student begins to experience these symptoms, please make sure you keep them at home. Please also be sure to consult a healthcare provider, and also please notify your child's school office. Now, for further updates on our hybrid plan and answers to frequently asked questions, please also continue to visit our website for updates, information, and resources. Please also continue to wear your masks and face coverings. Remember to wash your hands frequently, watch your distance, and stay home when you are ill. On behalf of Kent School District, I want to say thank you. Thank you to our staff, to our students, to our families, to our school board directors and our community partners. Here is to a healthy and safe end of our twenty twenty twenty-one school year. President Daniels, that concludes my report this evening. I want to thank everyone for your attention and thank you for your continued partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Watts. At this time, we're going to move on to Agenda Item four point zero, our legislative update. Director Vingadassalam, would you please do the honors?
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'll begin by saying that we are more than halfway done with the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three biennium session. And our, the final day of the legislative session is April twenty-fifth. The proposals for our state's three budgets, the operating, transportation, and capital are going to be unveiled this week. And there are going to be lots of opportunities for us to weigh in on the budget with, for board members with WASDA, our professional organization, and for the public to work with the legislators in the weeks to come. If you are interested in participating, there are many ways to participate in the legislations that's out there. And you can go to ledge dot wa dot gov and look at the pages for participating. In the meantime, we are going to keep communicating with legislators on how state dollars are needed to, for stability. And so one of the things that WASDA and board members have been working, we've been busy with providing input on the remaining bills that are still progressing through the session. And so a couple of things that I wanted to bring up status on the ones that were interested in S B fifty-one twenty-eight, if you remember, is concerning student transportation funding during a local, state, or national emergency. And it provides for an alternative student transportation allocation formula for school districts based on student service data to make sure, you know, districts have the resources they need to continue, continue serving the students. And that passed the Senate chamber, and it's also passed the House Education Committee, and now it's sitting in rules. So those are, these are going to be bills that you still have the opportunity to speak to our legislators. H B eleven fifty-three is Representative Orwell's Increasing Language Access in Public Schools. It's passed the House Education Committee, and it's been referred to appropriations. H B eleven sixty-two is concerning high school graduation credit and pathway options. This is going to have a little bit of a tough ride to get through because they have already passed eleven twenty-one, which is the emergency waiver of graduation requirement. So there's a question by senators, why are we bringing another proposal that is going to trim down on the credits and look for pathway options as a substitute? So there's a question on whether that will pass or not. But eleven twenty-one overwhelmingly passed giving the emergency waiver of graduation requirements. H B thirteen sixty-five is preparing and supporting appropriate computers and devices for public school students and instructional staff. That's passed the House Chamber, and it is also passed the Senate Education Committee, and it's been referred to Ways and Means Committee. And also twelve twenty-five, H B twelve twenty-five concerning school health, a school-based health centers, it's come back, and it's passed the House Chamber, and the Health and Long-Term Committee in Senate has passed it and referred to Ways and Means. I want to talk about H one twelve oh eight, which is modifying the learning assistance program. It's passed the House and it's in Senate, placed on second ready, second reading by the Rules Committee. I want to thank Representative Sullivan Burquist, Representative Entiman, and Senator Das for meeting with Auburn School District officials and I to discuss our school board priorities at the day on the Hill. I really thank our director, Executive Director Eric, Dr. Herman, and Dr. Watts for reviewing the talking points with me for that day of the three priorities that we wanted to consider, which were budget stabilization, graduation requirements, and student well-being. We really settled on the importance of allocations needing to be increased to include more school counselors, school nurses, social workers, et cetera, and, and really focusing in on mental health. We heard from our inclusive education staff members earlier. And we really believe that, that area of mental health and service for, whether it be social workers or social workers or psychologists or nurses, we are asking for increased funding for them. As an example, the state allocation for K S D nurse positions currently funds fifteen nursing positions, and we employ upwards of twenty-eight. We actually need forty-two in our, on all of our schools. And so due to the COVID nineteen, our needs are really more acute than ever. And our students have said that on many, many platforms that the mental health needs to be prioritized. There's currently not a bill in Olympia to address specifically student well-being. But it's interesting, Representative Sullivan said, well, the money that we're getting for the pandemic relief for the lab funds, those are all going to be flexible funds, and we'll have some opportunity to use those funds to meet these demands. So I think it'd be interesting to get a study of what is actually, what kind of financial commitment it requires to have forty-two nurses, for example, in our schools that is currently unfunded. And, and also providing teachers and staff the needed training to provide effective instruction that responds to student needs. One of the things that came up was also I was asking our representatives about the National nine-eight-eight system that Representative Orwell has suggested. It's going to expand and enhance the behavioral health crisis response and suicide prevention services. And that is, it's passed the House, and it's scheduled for an executive session in the Senate Committee on Behavioral Health Subcommittee to Health and Long-Term Care at ten thirty A M. on March twenty-sixth. And it would be important to testify on that particular bill because I think one of the considerations we have to think about is culturally, culturally relevant programming when it comes to crisis response. crisis response and suicide prevention services. I don't know if that has been thought through carefully and Representative Sullivan did talk about making sure that that should be a strong part of the bill. If anyone's interested in how the budget process actually works, it's pretty fascinating. You go to Washington State Wire to read all about it. There's a great article there on, I just type in how the budget process actually works and you'd be amazed what all happens. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vingadassalam. At this time, we are on to our proclamations and recognitions. So I would like to call upon Director Hamada to read our Occupational Therapy Month proclamation.
Whereas the American Occupational Therapy Association has declared the month of April to be known as National Occupational Therapy Month. And whereas the profession of occupational therapy makes valuable contributions in helping people live life to the fullest after an illness or injury. And whereas the services of occupational therapy are valuable to citizens of Kent through hospitals, home health agencies, schools, clinics and nursing homes. And whereas the health and productivity of our citizens depend upon the effective use of healthcare resources, including the important services of occupational therapists and occupational therapy assistants. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Kent School District Board of Directors does hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Occupational Therapy Month and calls upon all citizens to recognize the achievements and the contributions of these valued health professionals. Signed this 24th day of March 2021 by our Board of Directors and our Secretary to the Board.
Thank you. We're on to our second proclamation, Autism Awareness Month. Vice President Bender, would you please read that?
Of course. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a neurological and developmental disorder that affects communication and behavior. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that approximately one in 54 school-aged children has been identified with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas symptoms of autism can result in significant lifelong impairments of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors and understand verbal and nonverbal communication. And whereas applied behavior analysis has become widely accepted among healthcare professionals and used as treatment to improve a variety of skills. And whereas all individuals with autism should be included as valuable members of our community, provided with opportunities and supports to live, learn, work and play as independently as possible. Now therefore be it resolved, the Kent School District Board of Directors proclaims April 2021 as Autism Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to take time to learn about autism and how individuals with autism can make a difference in the community. Signed this 24th day of March 2021 by the Kent School District Board of Directors and Dr. Calvin J. Watts, Secretary to the Board.
Thank you, Vice President, President Bender. At this time, we're on to Agenda Item 6.0, our presentations. Dr. Watts, would you begin?
I would like to call on, my apologies. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to call on Dr. Jewel Harmon and Nutrition Services Director Teresa Fields to begin our presentation.
Good evening, President Daniels, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley. I am very excited to be here to just support Teresa in presenting to the board information about nutrition services, where our program has been, the journey we've had over the past year and where we're going in the future. And so please, Teresa, take it away.
Thank you. I apologize, I'm having an issue sharing my screen. Let's try that again. I apologize. Are you able to see my presentation now? No.
No.
Let's do that again. I apologize again.
Let's start the screen. Here we go.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Technology. Okay. So good evening, President Daniels, members of the board, Dr. Watts and Ms. Howley. These are the topics I will be presenting on this evening. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. What we see is the email linking to presentations. Sorry, we don't see the presentation yet. So if you are sharing your screen, it should give you a choice of what to share. And the thing you actually want to share will be the actual presentation. So you'll want to open it up first.
I apologize. Let's try that again.
If you, if that's easier to, I could open it and share my screen and you just tell me when to move forward.
Excuse the interruption. I do have it up. Would you like me to share?
Please, Karen.
Okay.
Thanks for everybody's patience.
Please just let me know when you'd like me to advance the slide.
Thank you. Okay. Can you advance the slide, please, Ms. Howley? Thank you. So these are the topics I will be presenting on tonight. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Next slide, please. Nutrition Services' primary function is to provide nutritious and appealing meals to ensure no student is hungry so they can focus on instruction. We operate the National School Lunch Program, which includes the breakfast, lunch, after-school snack and after-school supper programs. We process annual household applications for free and reduced-priced meals. We also process direct certification through the state that determines eligibility based on state benefits. On a contractual basis, we provide breakfast, lunch and snack to early learning sites. Next slide, please. We also provide breakfast, lunch and afternoon snack for the summer food service program. We partner with internal and external organizations to support a variety of nutrition, nutrition, education efforts. And we provide guidance to schools on compliance questions related to the competitive food policies and procedures. Internally, we provide beverage and meal services as well. Next slide, please. Our annual budget is $11.7 million. Fifty-one percent of our budget is attributed to salary and benefits. We have 125 employees and multiple positions in nutrition services. Seven percent of our budget is attributed to equipment, supplies and contracts. And 42% of our budget is attributed to food. Next slide, please. Thank you. Meals served to date, we have served over 547,000 breakfast and lunch. We provide a weekly milk box that is distributed on Wednesdays. As you can see, the percentages of students that qualify for free or reduced-priced meals has fluctuated over the years. We have increased our free and reduced percentages last year and we are currently at 52.39% district-wide this year. Next slide, please. Our department revenue comes from three sources. Seventy-four percent is federal reimbursement from free meals. Two percent is state reimbursement from reduced-priced meals. And 24% is local revenue that is through paid meals, all cart sales and catering services. Next slide, please. For the 2021 school year, we were preparing for the National School Lunch Program in a virtual world. We trained our staff in food prep and safety practices, proper PPE use. We prepare for technology use for meal service curbside. We were happy to hear that the USDA extended waivers allowing schools to continue to feed children zero to 18 years free through the end of the school year under the summer feeding program. Next slide, please. Nutrition Services has served over 1 million meals since the start of the school year. We distribute meals at 20 school sites, 20 bus stops that include apartment buildings in the community. We home-deliver weekly meals to 51 children in our community on a case-by-case basis. Excuse me. Vegetarian meals are offered at four different locations. Special dietary meals are provided to families who have a current plan in place when requested through our department. Meals are provided to enrolled Kent students who are receiving in-person services out of our district. Next slide, please. We could not have done all this without the help of our team. So I just want to say thank you to the Nutrition Services Team, Transportation Team, the Kent Warehouse Team, all of our staff behind the scenes that support us and parents and volunteers in our community. Next slide, thank you. Pandemic EBT, the first round of distribution will be sent directly to families. There is no need to apply for this round of pandemic EBT. Students who are eligible and currently enrolled from the beginning of the school year through January 31st, 2021 will receive these benefits. We have approximately 14,000 students that will be receiving a PEBT card. There will be two more rounds of distribution that will be announced soon. And there is a dedicated call center for this round for families that have questions regarding PEBT on our webpage. Next slide. So looking forward, we will be participating in the Community Eligy Provision, which we call CEP for the, starting in the 2022 school year. We have identified at least 10 schools. The final timeline to have all schools identified will be in April. All students attending these schools eat free regardless of income level. Next slide. Next steps will be, we will be purchasing new refrigerated trucks, which was put on hold due to the closure. So we're trying to move forward with that. We will also be looking at upgrading our central kitchen packing lines and equipment. We anticipate individual servings will, moving forward for some time. And we will also evaluate our school kitchen equipment needs on the recommendation of the Department of Health for Food Service Operations. Thank you, Ms. Howley. That is my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Fields, questions?
I just, I just have a comment that I want to say that it's incredible how you guys have switched, you know, from in-person delivery over to getting to so many of our kids and our students in need. I just think it's phenomenal. From last year, when I first drove by to see how it was operating, I was really impressed with how everybody was trying to relate to the cars driving by and how it was done. So I hadn't had a chance to thank you personally. There's no greater, greater cause than feeding our kids. And so I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Director Hamada. We greatly appreciate that. It's a team effort.
I have a question. Can I hear a little bit more about the CEP? And also, I'm curious about whether we've thought about as a district, oh, I don't know what the cost would be, where all students eat free regardless. I just want to hear a little bit more about that.
So CEP is based on individual student percentages based on direct certification through the state. And it depends on the benefits they get through the state. So it could be food stamps. We also look at homeless and foster. And there is a formula that we use to determine which schools may qualify for CEP. Based on that, there's another percentage that we calculate that would give us the reimbursement rate from the state. So if the percentage of one school is 82.5%, for example, we would get 82.5% reimbursement for free meals at that rate. And then we would, the other percentage, we would not get that money for. We would get it at the paid rate.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there a plan, you think? Or is there, and I don't know who this is directed for, it might be to you, Ms. Fields. And thank you for the presentation. I really do appreciate that. Is there a plan? Is there something in the future we can look at where all students in KSD will get free meals regardless of income? Is that something?
Well, that would be great. We're working our way up there. There, there, there is ways to get more schools on CEP. But again, it also, it starts with the ISP. And if we can get the level high enough, definitely we could look at something like that. But right now, our district isn't there.
Awesome. But I think it's great that's going to be at 10 sites. Thank you for all your hard work that you and your team do. I'm very happy that you presented this evening. I'm glad to hear more about nutrition services. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Director Bento.
Yes, thank you, Director Fields. I appreciate seeing you again and thank you for all the hard work as well. I am kind of sort of curious about this dedicated call center for PEBT. Do we know how many people are contacting that particular call center from KSD? Like who's taking advantage?
I know a few families have contacted the center and some of the questions that they get from the center, they have to be directed back to us because there may be address changes or something like that, or they want to make sure their students are on free and reduced if they're not being seen on the list through the call center. I don't have an exact number of how many families are contacting the center.
Do you know if there's language services at that center?
Yes, there is.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I also wanted to ask about breakfast after the bell. How does that look like in this virtual world?
Yes. So it has, we have to implement it because it's a mandate. So depending on what the fall looks like, we will be, we are in the process of trying to work plans for breakfast after the bell for the schools that have to participate in that program.
How many schools do we have right now?
That have to participate in breakfast after the bell. I'm not quite sure. I need to get back with you on that. I haven't looked at it in a while. So I will.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So what changes are going to be, you're, I'm just imagining that your whole department is going to be making drastic changes in April. So what, what is that going to look like for your team? What changes is going to be made in April when we go back to hybrid learning?
So with the plan that was announced last week, right now, we don't see a big change. We would continue the weekly mailbox. I believe the secondary teachers are still negotiating, so I can't speak on that part of it. But our plan right now is to continue to do the weekly mailbox. We will provide a snack in the morning as kids are entering the school if they didn't have breakfast at home. And then we would still expect families, if needed, to pick up a weekly mailbox on Wednesdays.
Great. So, but it's not going to cause a new coal strain on your team?
Not right at the moment. If things change into something different, then it probably would. And we're planning for that as well.
Okay. Thank you for feeding our kids.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. You guys have been there since the very beginning and with smiles and welcoming. And so I would have the opportunity to go to a couple of sites. So I really just want to thank you and your entire team the opportunity to go to a couple of sites. So I really just want to thank you and your entire team for going above and beyond consistently and constantly taking care of our kids. So you are our heroes in the district, and so we do appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you, President Daniels.
Absolutely.
Have a wonderful.
I have one question about, you know, during breaks. I'm wondering, how do we decide that we don't give mealboxes out during the breaks when the kids, because I've had parents ask me about that?
Sure. So when we put our calendar together for the beginning of the school year, we were following the school calendar. And so in order to serve meals during those breaks like we did during the emergency, we would have to get special permissions for that. And so this year, I, I decided that we wouldn't ask for those permissions because I was thinking about my team, who again has been here throughout the whole closure and pandemic and just working themselves to the bone, and they need, I feel that, felt that they needed that break. So that's why we're not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. You guys have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to Agenda Item seven point zero, our items for discussion and approval. We'll begin with Agenda Item seven point zero one, the purchase order approval for A L C schools for inclusive education. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the motion seven point oh one, purchase order approval for A L C schools.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward. We're just, we need to provide transportation for our inclusive ed, and then the next one for McKinney-Vento Transportation. Looks like it was budgeted, so.
Any additional discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item seven point zero one, the purchase order approval for A L C schools for inclusive ed. All of us in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Any opposed, raise your right hand and say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Agenda Item seven point zero two, purchase order approval for A L C schools McKinney-Vento and Foster Transportation. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve seven point oh two, purchase order approval for A L C schools McKinney-Vento Foster Transportation.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item seven point zero two, the purchase order approval for A L C schools McKinney-Vento and Foster Transportation, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. The motion carries. Agenda Item seven point zero three, Kent Meridian High School PAC Lighting for Theater Design and Production. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve seven point oh three, Kent Meridian High School PAC Lighting for Theater Design and Production.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. I noticed that it's coming out of the C T E funds, and we were talking about this before, and I'm wondering if the C T E Director or Finance can talk about why it's taken out of C T E versus general budget?
Yes, and I was going to, good evening, members of the board, President Daniels, Vice President Bedinger, Dr. Watson, Ms. Howley. I was going to invite Lori Paxton, who's our Director of Career and Technical Education, to provide some context and background for how we're funding this.
Great, thank you, Ms. Weston. Good evening, Director Daniels, members of the board, Dr. Watts, and Director Bento. Really, this is one of those items that could go either way, and it could be split, but right now, we have sufficient C T E funding. And the theater design class needs that equipment, so it is crucial to the curriculum of the class. So that's why, in speaking with Executive Director Rarick, we determined that that was an appropriate fund since we have the funds. If we didn't, that would be a different conversation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Being a C T E teacher myself, like, I've always wanted to make sure my students getting funds that they need to do the programming, so I'm very glad to hear it's for a student program, and that's why it's coming out of the C T E budget. So that makes me very happy that the students get this. So thank you so much for answering my question.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item seven point zero three, the Kent Meridian High School PAC Lighting for Theater Design and Production, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Seven point zero four, Kent Ridge High School PAC Lighting for Theater Design and Production. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve seven point oh four, Kent Ridge High School PAC Lighting for Theater Design and Production.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion?
I have a question. I noticed they're both, the Kent Ridge and the Kent Meridian, I noticed that there was a significant difference in cost between the two. Can we kind of explain that a little bit, why it's not the same? I'm assuming it's different size auditoriums, but I'm just curious.
Yes, that's part of it. And the other part of it is Kent Ridge has been planning a little bit longer term and has kind of slowly acquired a few items, so they didn't need to do a complete update at this time, whereas Kent Meridian did.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item seven point zero four, the Kent Ridge High School PAC Lighting for Theater Design and Production, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any extensions? The motion carries. Seven point zero five, professional services contract for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Bowman Global in Kent School District. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve seven point oh five, professional services contract for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, Bowman Global in Kent School District.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I had had some questions. And just about around why these sessions are pre-recorded and things like that, and I will say, the company has only been around since August of twenty twenty. So I see, I got an answer that this, this was sourced because a staff member went to a webinar. So I'm just curious which staff member?
Good evening, Vice President Bedinger, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley. Yes, I'm going to call on, I've got two people able to speak and answer any questions in regards to this particular piece this evening. Kathy Lindowski, Director of Program and Professional Development, and Sherry Simpson, Assistant Director. Student Family Support Services are both available to answer your questions, and starting with that specific question first.
I'd like to address the only in business since twenty twenty. That's not really accurate. April Bowman has been a consultant, equity consultant since two thousand sixteen. She was under a sole proprietorship at that time. In twenty twenty-one, she moved to an L L C, Bowman Global. So it's just the name of her business, the type of consulting agency she was under that has changed. So which staff member attended the webinar that, so we found her?
Hi, so I can address that question. So Lori, sorry, not Lori. Kathy and I have spent a couple months interviewing and meeting with different organizations to discuss this training. She had, one of our liaisons in my department had put her on my radar by just a glowing recommendation from when she saw her through the Passport of College Foundation.
So I think my biggest, I think this training is important, and that's, I guess I should have started with that. I think it's really important. I know we've had in-person offerings, so I'm just, the piece of it, especially when I think about the Safe Schools Training and all that being delivered in a kind of similar recorded module participation piece, this seems so very important, and so I guess I have big concerns about pre-recorded sessions with no interaction. And especially with this very important work. So I'm just curious, are we going to have in-person training, equity training?
So I can, I can address that. We did this in a similar framework for our S E L training at the start of the school year. So principals met with their staff. They would have them do a flipped classroom model where they would go watch a module and perhaps do a couple extra extension opportunities. And then they would come back and they would talk within their P L Cs with discussion questions. So yes, the modules would be accessed independently, but this is more of a, you do the learning and then you discuss with your grade level team. And then you go back and do more learning and discuss with your grade levels.
Okay, so it's not going to be just, I'm checking a box and I'm just doing, you know, as long as I take this lesson, I've done my training. That's my concern, is that there's going to be, so there will be discussion. There will be human interaction. This isn't just a check the box.
Yes, no, so it went very well with the S E L training at the start of the year where teams were able to connect with one another. We really believe that the real work takes place in this type of training with you having conversation with your grade level teams.
Yeah. So, okay, so but how, how are you going to measure, how are you going to ensure that there are conversations, that it's not just my, you know, that it's not just a take the module and then we're going to check the box that you attended this racial equity training?
So very similar to what we did at the start of this year. The staff were with, their, their staff was together for the full day where the principals were able to drop into all the different groups as they were meeting with their P L Cs. So we see this being something where they watch a module, come to their P L C group, principal is able to go in there, they're given guided discussion questions.
Right.
Go back and watch the next part of the module, and then back into their discussion groups.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had some of the similar questions, and I want to thank Dr. Watts for responding to my questions. One of my questions had to do with, like, why are we outsourcing and not using our local knowledge? We have a lot of great local knowledge here, Puget Sound, E S D, U Dub, et cetera. And I, one of the answers was that the P S E S D and O S P I recommended this, which is great. I also struggle with the idea of check equity. I heard that, I'm going to use it forever now, where you check a box because you did equity training. So like, check, we're good, like, we're good at equity, and I also, I'm glad to hear that it's not just watching videos and you're done. I'm glad there's going to be discussions and that more face-to-face instead of just video. So I wasn't really aware of that reading what I read, so I'm glad to hear that background. But also, I struggle with, like, virtual is challenging, and having tough discussions about race and equity and social justice is difficult virtually. And I'm wondering how this is going to be extended. Is this just a one and done? Are we going to have continued conversations? And that's another thing I wasn't clear on with this program. Like, there's some modules, but how long was this for, and is there going to be follow-up when we're in person?
So I, I will say that there have been ongoing trainings in our buildings and in our district over many years. This is, the idea for this is that we will finally, and our school board has been asking for this for all the years I've been here, we will finally have a baseline where everyone will be getting one uniform training across the district where we can have some baseline knowledge. And buildings will continue the great work they're doing on equity training, will continue offering equity classes and opportunities. And when we're able to, if we have the opportunity and the planets align, we would love to continue district-wide efforts. But it will continue in one way or the other.
All right, so I just want to take a moment and say thank you. I do appreciate, I'm one of the people who have been asking for it since I got on the board, and so but I also want to make a note, you know, the board participated in training several months ago, and we have not had any conversation or continued about the training that we received. So I would encourage us that we probably need to do what you guys are asking the district to do, which is to follow up with our own training and have our own conversations, and not just make it the one-and-done checkbox that happened for us several months ago, so. All right, is there any other discussion?
I would also add that our principals and our district leader, our leadership team, we've planned out a year-long series of courses on becoming an anti-racist educator, training of trainers over the course of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to support our principals, both in leading this particular work for this day, but also continuing to lead those conversations over the course of next year and the years to come.
Yeah, that's a great training. I've taken that, so that's fantastic. Glad to hear that. All right, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate approving Agenda Item seven point zero five, professional services contract for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Bowman Global in Kent School District. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Agenda Item seven point zero six, the purchase of transportation shop service truck. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve seven point oh six, purchase of transportation shop service truck. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? The motion carries. We're on to our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to pull Item eight oh four, Resolution Number sixteen hundred, revised protocol guidelines.
Is there a motion then to approve Consent Agenda Items eight zero one, eight zero two, eight zero three, eight zero four, and, I'm sorry, eight zero five, and eight zero six, minus eight zero four?
I make a motion, we approve Consent Agenda minus eight point oh four.
It's our second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, so.
Wait, we have to prove that, okay, first, and then we'll go to, okay. All right, all those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda minus Agenda Item eight point zero four, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Now we need a motion to approve Agenda Item eight point zero four, and we'll begin discussion.
I move that we approve Agenda Item eight point zero four, Resolution Number sixteen hundred, revised protocol guidelines.
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion?
Yeah, the beauty part of taking a lot of notes and writing, and this is how I remember. And it came up when I was actually making the corrections to this that we had discussed at our meeting. A couple of things popped out to me that didn't pop out to me when we talked before that I just wanted to run by because I feel like I don't have clarity on this. It says the board, it's number one, the board will consider the district's core values of equity, excellence, and community, research best practices, and public input when appropriate in its decision-making process. I guess, so we added the when appropriate, and I know we looked over that, but in looking at it, when I typed it up again, I began wondering what we meant when we said when appropriate, because as board directors, we represent the community, so it's always appropriate. So is it, is the when appropriate in regards to research, is it in regards to best practices? Or is it in regards to public input in its decision-making process? So I'm questioning why, and not remembering why we added long ago those words, when appropriate.
So we did discuss it at our conversation, and we talked about some things as simple as if we took out the when appropriate, it could be something as simple as, let's say, a building decided they wanted to do a book study, or they wanted to do something simple that would not necessarily require the approval of the entire board, or the approval of the entire public. So it was just because we talked about what was the scope potentially of those, of those things, and so in order to make it to where it wouldn't be something so minor, we decide, that's why we said when appropriate. So we talked through that.
So I would feel more comfortable that, with that, if it's, if we added language that said when appropriate in scope in its decision-making process. Because I think, as written, it Um, because I think as written, it makes me feel like there's, it's open, it's subjective and it's open to, it's not clear enough, and so it allows the board to just dismiss something, public input, because they didn't, the board didn't deem it appropriate. Um, and so is it possible that we add more language? And, and I realize we might need to not approve this and bring it back another time. Um, but that, in re-looking at that, I'm not, I'm not comfortable because it feels too subjective and, um, it makes me uncomfortable that it's too subjective. So maybe adding language like when appropriate in, in scope in its decision-making process or something to that effect, because, um, yeah, I don't, it's too subjective.
Was this your only concern? Is just that one, or did you have other?
Um, and then there was another one, actually.
So, so then maybe we should not approve this and go back and finish working it out so that we could.
Okay, it's my, and I'll just, I'll just throw out the one, the other one I had is on 13, we agree to follow the agenda process to ask the board president or the superintendent to place an item on the agenda. And then I started thinking, cause I, before board meetings, I review outstanding items that I have, and one of the outstanding items I have is I have three times sent, uh, a request for a work session so we can accomplish our um, board goal that was supposed to be done by the end of December to have a communication plan for dealing with, you know, how we are going to interact with the public. And that has not been approved or even acknowledged. So it, again, so those are the two, and so yes, I think, I don't feel comfortable on this yet until we have a, a deeper discussion on those two.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. Can these policies be brought back again? So if we vote on this, can we bring this back again and discuss it again?
Yeah, we can go back and work it. This is our protocol. This is our board protocol. So yeah, we could definitely take it back. And that's what I was saying, we can vote it down and then take it back and work on it and bring it back for.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we voted down, it's like not going away forever, like we can't, no, we got it. I just want to process question. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, um, hearing that, I will call for the vote. So all those in favor of approving agenda item 8.04, the resolution number 1600, our revised protocol guidelines, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye. All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no.
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 Well.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion fails. We're on to our final communication from the audience. Ms. Howley, did you have more comments to read?
Yes, President Daniels, there are a couple, are a couple more.
Okay, thank you.
The next comment is from Joshua Drake Paul. And he says, I am a parent of two elementary-age boys in the KSD. My wife is also a teacher in KSD. Under RCW 43.06221H, the proclamation issued by Governor Inslee on March 15th, 2021, is legally enforceable. It is very clear the language in the proclamation requires school districts to offer hybrid learning for all students who wish to go back to in-person learning. We have received information, the district plans to limit the hybrid option to space available. For my discussion with OSPI, this is a direct violation of the governor's proclamation and won't be allowed. Please provide clarification and assurance that all students who select the hybrid option will be given that option. Thank you. The next comment is from Shannon Kelly. As a parent of two elementary students, I am deeply discouraged and enraged by the school board's lack of concern for our students being able to return to in-person learning. We were so excited to get to choose the hybrid option for school until we read the fine print, no AB schedule, just 50% of the kids per class, and if too many want to return, tough luck, kids will get denied. As far as I am concerned, any child who chooses the hybrid in-person option provided by KSD should be allowed to return. Our children have the constitutional right to equal access. If this means that elementary schools need to hold classes in the gyms or cafeterias, in music rooms, and in the library, since specials are virtual anyway, so be it. Why was an AB morning and afternoon schedule not an option to avoid these situations? Why don't you want to give our kids access to their education? It is time to think outside the box and ensure every child in the district has equitable access to high-quality academic, which is guaranteed by KSD's own mission statement. Please do not deny any child that wants to return in person. You can look up my survey. I ended up choosing remote after learning that my children would be denied access to school due to our economic status. Not because my kids are succeeding and thriving at home, they are not, but because of my tax return. This is not how school should be. School is their right, not your right, to drag your feet for a year causing insurmountable pain and suffering in our youth. Then just trying to make this option the worst ever and blame the teachers. You should be ashamed of yourselves. This is negligence. The next comment is from Kristy Loganville. I am extremely disappointed in the KSD back-to-school hybrid learning model being placed before students and families. It is inadequate and does not offer each child a fair chance to get back to the classroom. Each family is being asked to complete a survey and decide while at the same time left with several unanswered questions and concerns. I have a kindergartner and a fifth grader in the dual-language program. For my kindergartner, she has a praxia of speech as well as is very shy with some anxiety. Staying with her teacher and maintaining that relationship is key to her education and success. Yet I am being asked to choose hybrid or stay remote with no reassurance I can stay with her teacher. Why the option of staying with my teacher was taken out of the survey does not make sense. And for the kindergartners, without an AB morning-afternoon schedule, there is no way to offer every child a way to get back to the classroom. Kent has taken away our children's right to be in the classroom with their teacher. For dual-language, the obstacles are equally as frustrating. Kent has had a year to come up with a hybrid plan for dual-language. Yet here we are with less than a few days of the survey done deadline and no answers. How then do I pick an option of remote or hybrid? With no reassurance, my child will continue with their dual-language teachers. The teachers in this program are irreplaceable and non-transferable. Families deserve to know how this will play out so that we can make an appropriate choice for our children. Why weren't families given an option to follow what their teacher does? And why wasn't a plan presented that would provide an opportunity for all kids to return to the classroom with their existing teacher? Isn't that what Governor Inslee intended when mandating that all schools return to in-person? Kent's current plan does not serve all children. This is not preparing all our kids for the future. KSD has wasted the past year with no planning to show for it. What has the leadership in our district been doing? And why has the school board been shut out of all back-to-school planning? In other districts, it is the school board deeply involved in the planning, watching out for the public's best interests in the planning process and making sure all concerns are addressed. I've even heard people on the back-to-school task force mention that the task force itself has not met in months. How is this acceptable? KSD leadership is once again failing our kids. Look at the districts around us who have already rolled out a plan to provide in-person schooling for every child who wants it. And here we are, March, with a giant mess where no parent is happy. KSD, please do better. The next comment is from Erica Eto. Do you have any idea how senior graduation is going to work? I am a current senior at Kentwood High School and this year has definitely been rough. All seniors have been stripped away from their senior year, no football games, prom, other activities. A lot of us miss our friends and this graduation could be the last time we see them before we graduate. If we are going back to school in April, I think we should be able to have in-person graduation. We could do it in an open field or park, wearing masks. So is there any way we can have in-person graduation for seniors? The next comment is from Morag Stratton. As a KSD alum and parent, I am shocked that our district, one that touts equality, inclusion, and transparency, has adopted a hybrid model that off, offers exactly the opposite. Governor Inslee's March 15th emergency proclamation stated that all Washington schools must offer all K through 12 students a hybrid model that includes at least two days of in-person learning, which equates to at least 30% in-person instructional time. KSD has apparently interpreted that to mean they must offer, but not provide, in-person learning to all students. At they, at best, KSD will provide in-person learning to only 30% of those students who request it. Families are being told they must choose hybrid or remote, but what you are not telling us is that only 30% of families who choose in-person will receive it. The remainder will be forced back into remote. That is intentionally deceptive and misleading to families and students. That is not transparency, equity, or inclusion. Many families are planning their lives around Monday through Friday in-person learning. Students are excited to go back. Those of us who are expressing our outrage tonight are doing so in the hope that you, the board, will do the right thing before it's too late and give families all of the infor, information they need to make an informed decision. Our greater hope, though, is that the hybrid model would be revised to, number one, reflect equality, inclusion, and transparency. Number two, provide every KSD student with an opportunity for in-person learning. You were put in this position of, of leadership at this time for this reason. Make it count. Do the right thing. The next comment is from Emma Pollak. Emma says, what is being considered as the hybrid learning plan is being finalized? Why has the process of the finalization of the plan taken so long? The next comment is from Avery Zero. Avery says, once KSD high schools go back to hybrid learning, what will be the protocol for if a student tests positive for COVID-19? President Daniels, that is the last public comment.
Thank you so much, Ms. Howley. At this time, we are on to our agenda item. Um, I'm sorry, I guess it's 9.02, um, the board report's in discussion. So who would like to begin? Does anyone have a board report?
I mean, I could start.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, um, thank you to everybody, uh, for watching and thank you for everyone for presenting and who is here this evening. Um, as far as what I've been up to, um, I went to KEA has an LGBTQ plus fellowship group. And, um, they found out that I was a certified trainer for NEA and WA and Glisten for LGBTQ issues in schools. So I'm going back to do some professional development about LGBTQ issues with them. I have three scheduled through May, one a month, um, which I'm really excited to work with this group of educators. Uh, I also had a meeting with the Kent area PTA council president. That was really informative to hear about the history of kind of PTA, and I really don't know how the PTA organization works. So it's really great to kind of hear about the different organizational structure and the kinds of things that, um, the PTA does in Kent, uh, things I didn't even realize I love hearing about. So I'm really excited, um, to kind of, uh, to have that meeting and to work with them in the future. I'm really curious to check out the clothing bank that's over at the Phoenix Academy and, uh, see how that works and, uh, volunteers who run that. I'm really excited to hear about that wonderful program. Um, also, I've attended the Communities and Schools, uh, Student Breakfast on the 18th, which was amazing to see the videos and to see the work that Communities and Schools is doing. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the work that they're doing and volunteering in some way. I really believe in Communities and Schools and work closely with Communities and Schools in Renton as well. I think it's just a wonderful organization. Um, I do have some upcoming things I'm gonna go to. I'm meeting with KEA. Um, I think it's their policy team, so I'm gonna check that out. And I have a meeting with council member Dave Up the Grove, uh, this week, and, um, he asked for the meeting, so I'm gonna see what's up. And then we do have a listening session with the Office of the Ombuds, uh, next week as well. So I'm really excited about all the work. Please keep asking me to come to things. I'm gonna reach out to the CTE director next, cause I really want to do some advisory work, cause I just had our advisory meeting in Renton. So I'm excited about doing advisory work with committees. So like, I'm gonna reach out and, um, I think that's it. So yeah, please continue to reach out to me. I would love to visit classes if I can, um, specifically some of the IB programs, psychology, health, please invite me. I'm very excited to meet with students, um, in KSD. So thank you, and that is my report.
Okay, who's next?
I can go next. Uh, I don't have much more than what I reported. Uh, most of my work has been on the legislative end, uh, so, um, I did wanna say, uh, thank you to communities of schools in Kent, of course, uh, wonderful breakfast, and I'm so happy every year to participate in such a great, um, supportive partner with the Kent School District. Thank you, um, uh, Dr. Behringer and, um, all of the staff members and, uh, Sisk, uh, for all that you do and the mentors, of course. Um, I did mention that once I get off the board, I plan to become a mentor, um, and, uh, participate, so hopefully, um, uh, I'll get to commit and, uh, take part in that experience. Um, I also have been participating on a committee that, uh, WESDA has just recently created. Uh, boards of color, uh, board members of color, uh, participating, talking about our struggles in, um, being a board member. Um, and, uh, dealing with various aspects of, um, running for a elected position. Um, and also had an opportunity, uh, to speak with, uh, a couple of our board members uh, in, from, um, uh, various districts across the state. Uh, that Educational Opportunity App and Oversight and Accountability Committee of OSPI, um, to talk about our experience as board members and, and look at what are the professional develop, development opportunities that, uh, we need as board members um, to really look at professionalizing, uh, what board members do. Um, I don't think it's valued, um, I don't think it's recognized for the time and the commitment we have to make. Um, and I also believe there's a lot of training and development that's. And I also believe there's a lot of training and development that's needed prior to someone getting on the school board so that school board members are ready to go day one and make decisions and be well-informed. Knowledge is power, and having an informed candidate could really prove to be what carries the candidate across the finish line. Sometimes that is really the difficult part, is not having that expertise in the education field, but understanding, you know, all of the critical issues that we as board members have to make decisions on, whether it be discipline or academic or social-emotional learning. There are various things that we have to be ready to respond to on day one. And so it's not just a matter of orientation, but preparation prior to getting on the school board. And so there is a pitch and argument that I made to our legislators who are part of that meeting to really support professional development for school board and not just look at racial equity training, one or two trainings, but really look at professional development in the sense that we need to understand education as a whole. So that said, I am looking forward to also all of our upcoming meetings, and I thank you all for all that you do for our students and families. Good night.
I'll go next. So since our last meeting, yes, I was trying to get some more insight on our task force meetings and get links and was not able to attend. I only wanted to attend to get further information. And I have had some parents who have been on the task force that have reached out and contacted me. And so I've had, been talking to a lot of parents, actually. Because we're getting so many emails, I am starting to just ask parents to just call and chat. And so I'm getting a lot of interesting perspective on what happens in schools all over this district, so I really appreciate that. And I think our parents are passionate and involved. I am, I'm following up with the state auditor because I did have some items for, some risk assessment items that I did present. We had a meeting. And just following up on that is what I did. You know, I'm, and I'm meeting with OSPI tomorrow because I have questions about just the governor's, the governor's plan and things like that, just so I have a better knowledge of how this all works and don't take anyone's time who's working on it actively in the district. And, you know, someone submitted a comment earlier tonight, and I, I thought it was interesting. And, you know, the board has the sole authority to hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent, and the community has that sole authority too. And so they have the sole authority, but it's to the board. They have the sole authority to essentially hire, fire, and evaluate us. And, you know, I take the responsibility very seriously, and, you know, I have had questions that have not fully been answered. And so then that, you know, talks, and whenever I do that, I start to try and self-reflect and talk about leadership. And so, you know, we had some, the superintendent brought up James Kuzis and Barry Posner, and I was thinking about their work, and I kind of, it was an opportunity to kind of revisit it. And so I started to think about my own leadership, and, you know, one thing, some things they say about leadership is that, you know, individuals make a difference, but it's not about the personality of the leadership, it's about the behavior. What does the leader do? And that, you know, credibility is the very foundation of leadership. So if someone doesn't believe the messenger, they don't believe the message. That's basically their first law of leadership, and then the next is do what you say you're going to do. So if there's a gap between words and action, so, you know, that has inspired me to really look at leadership and taking action in things. And, you know, the greatest leaders are the type whose direction everyone around them would willingly follow. And, you know, in this year of challenges, you know, that's something else that I, I want to keep in foremost in my mind when I do this board work because honestly, I'm here for the students. I'm here for every parent who wrote to us tonight in confusion and frustration. I represent you, and I take that very seriously. By law, what happens in the school district is, falls to the majority of the board that makes the decision on that. And so it's been an opportunity, and in that, so, like I said, that's why I'm, I'm starting to reach out more to get the information I need that I'm not getting, and I'm talking to as many people as I can. I look forward to our listening session next week. I think it's just with, just within our group, you know, within the district. I don't think the state, I think it's just us, I could be wrong, doing some follow-up. So I'm excited for that and, you know, continuing this work. So I thank everyone, all our teachers who are doing their best. I thank everyone who presented tonight. I'm, thank all my board colleagues for all their hard work. And I am continuing to do the work, and again, but I recognize I work for the constituents, and you have every right, you know, you hire, fire, and evaluate the board. So thank you, everyone, for your time.
Director Amad, do you have a report?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I want to give a shout out to the Breakfast for Kids. Dr. Behringer did a wonderful job of leading us off in that, and the kids, and the videos we saw were very uplifting. I have a shout out to the governor who extended the moratorium on rent until June thirtieth. You can't be evicted until June thirtieth, and I was really concerned about that. It affects a lot of our families. In another hat I wear, I see lots and lots of our families are way behind in their rent and trying very hard now that they're back to some hours that they work to keep themselves and their rent caught up as much as possible. So I'm glad he saw the light to give them a chance to even get caught up more. Also a shout out to, actually, the Washington State's budget because the revenues are coming in so much stronger than we thought. So that can only be good for education. So we want to make sure that if we have some budget money and they're not as, and as dire straight as they thought they were going to be in, that we will receive that. Those are really good points to me. And I have a couple of concerns tonight. Again, on February ninth, we did celebrate or whatever, remember not really celebrate. Let us never forget about the internment of Japanese-Americans during World War II. Again, I've said this before, my husband was born in an internment camp. Seventy-eight years later, we are still showing Asian hate and Pacific Islander hate, and it's very sad for me to have to see that happening again after all that many years. And another issue that came up to me that I'm very concerned about is, when I went to school, we have made some efforts on Title IX, but when I saw the NCAA women's team not have the same conditions that the men's team did in their finals for their training session, and I think they did finally bring in some equipment, that we, we have to make a lot more strides for our women. And I mean, I can remember when I was going to school and played basketball, loved basketball, loved sports, but we could only dribble three times, and that was the rule for women. And I'm not even going to go into the ridiculous reasons why, but we have made some strides. But we also have to need, also need to make bigger strides. And I'm just going to close with what I always say, that governmental institutions exist because the community feels there is a need to be developed for the common good. When decision-makers of those institutions fail to listen to their constituents, they fail. And I, with that, I'm going to conclude my report.
Thank you. All right, so I will be brief. I want to thank everyone that has tuned in to watch and everyone that is here. I appreciate the presentations, and I appreciate the constant amount of work that has gone into everything from labor negotiations to teaching our students to feeding our students. This staff is truly amazing, and it's, I, it hurts me sometimes that people don't acknowledge the work that goes into everything that's happening right now. So I just want you to know that you are appreciated. You know, as a parent also, I, you know, we hear from a lot of different people about a lot of different things, and especially with this, the hybrid and, you know, return to learning and remote versus in-person and all of those things. You know, I, we hear from a lot of folks, and, and not everyone is on the same page. I'll just say, my daughter is choosing, choosing to stay home. She does not want to go back into the building. And so I think we need to understand and give grace that everyone has different perspectives and everyone has different experiences, and I think we need to honor those choices and honor people's right to choose. And, and this is a very difficult task for many districts across the, the state and across the nation. Everyone's working to try and do what is best for our students and our, and our staff and their families. And I think, you know, it is difficult, and it, it does hurt when, when board members are accused of, for whatever reason, keeping kids out of school. That is the farthest from, from our intentions and from what we, we signed up to do. So just know that that is not why we're here. We are here to support our students and to do what is best for our students and our staff and families. And so I wanted to say that. I also want to say that I am excited, as I'm sure many kids and parents are, that there'll be spectators at some of the upcoming sporting events. So some of us cheated and went and stood behind fences and watched, but that's okay. But it's previous games. But, um, anyway, I'm very excited because I see how excited our students are and our families and, and staff. And so just, just really getting back to some form of celebration for our kids is amazing. I also want to continue to talk about, you know, I, I made a statement before our work session about standing with our Asian brothers and sisters, and hate has no place here. Hate has no place for anyone. And so I would like to encourage us in, in the conversation we had earlier, you know, I think about the work that we need to do, and I believe as a board, we are not leading the work. When we talk about equity and we say the right things, but when it comes actually down to doing the work as a board, we are not doing it. So we actually did one of those, take the training, check the boxes, and there has been no conversation since. So I'm going to challenge us that, you know, to model what it is we expect from our district because we have those issues as well in our board. And if we are not willing to stand up and address them and have those conversations and continue work ourselves, it is really difficult for us to hold other people accountable for something that we are not willing to do. So that said, I wish you guys a good evening. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful weekend, and I appreciate you. Take care. We are adjourned.